If you would call the roll please.
Mr. Stephen L. Berry Sr., Mr. Halby Miles Sr., Mr. Kenneth L. Pritchett, Mr. Kenneth L. Pritchett.
Here.
Mr. Carr Tucker, Ms. Joyce Proctor.
Here.
Mr. Bernard J. Lundey Jr.
Here.
Mr. Adrian T. Dance Sr.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Pierce, have you read us into close?
Yes, sir. I move that the school board go into close, into a closed meeting as authorized by section 2.2 that has 3711A1 of the Code of Virginia for the purpose of discussion or consideration of prospective candidates for employment.
Thank you. You've heard the motion is there second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dance. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion carried. We now enter into close.
...
I'm out of clothes. Move by Ms. Proctor. Second, Mr. Danes.
As required by Section 2.2-3712D of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, a roll call vote will be taken to certify that. To the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the act. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session by the board prior to the vote. Any member of the board who believes that there was a departure from the requirements of one and two as read shall so state the same, indicating the substance of the departure that in his or her judgment has taken place. Does any board member wish to respond? Hearing no response, I will now take the Freedom of Information Act roll call. Mr. Steven O'Pierce Senior.
Yes.
Mr. Halby Miles Senior. Mr. Kenneth Del Pritchett.
Yes.
Mr. Kari Tucker.
Yes.
Joyce Proctor.
Yes.
Mr. Bernard J. Lundey Junior.
Yes.
Mr. Adrian T. Dance Senior.
Yes.
Thank you. We do not have any action items from closed session. Is there a motion to adjourn from closed?
So.
By Mr. Pierce, is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Tucker. Okay, Mrs. Tucker. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed, motion carries. Good evening once again, everyone. The time now is 5:02 PM and we would like to call, I'd like to call our regular board meeting to order. Ms. Davis, if you recall the role once again.
Mr. Steven O'Pierce Senior.
Here.
Mr. Halby Miles Senior. Mr. Kenneth Del Pritchett.
Here.
Mr. Kari Tucker.
Here.
Ms. Joyce Proctor. Mr. Bernard J. Lundey Junior.
Here.
Mr. Adrian T. Dance Senior.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Okay, yep. All right, thank you Board Chair Pritchett and School Board members. I'm excited this evening to bring, bring forward some great recognitions.
Sorry about that. Okay, board members, we move to 1A, approval of the agenda. If there are no changes, there are motion to approve the agenda.
No move.
Move by Mr. Pierce, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Danes, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next we move to the moment of silence. Okay, the moment of silence, we want to remember Dr. Stacy Perm and family in the passing of her aunt, Ms. Louise V. Owens on September, August the 3rd of 2025, Sunday, I'm sorry, I said September. Sunday, August the 3rd of 2025, Resource Officer Joshua Cuba and family in the passing of his grandmother, Ms. Ruby J. Brooks on Wednesday, August the 5th, 2025. The family of Ms. Wanda Corbett, former PCPS educator in the passing, in her passing on Thursday, August the 14th, 2025. And Mr. Kenneth Del Pritchett, School Board Chair, and his family in the passing of his grandmother, Ms. Rosa Lee Pritchett-Win. At this time, we have a moment of silence. Okay, thank you. Next we have our pledge of allegiance, 1C. Mr. Danes. Oh, no. That's fine. Okay.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next we move to 1. Okay, next we move to 1D, correspondence. I do not believe we have any correspondence. We'll move next. Ms. Brown to number 2, recognitions 2A and B.
Thank you Board Chair Pritchett and School Board members. Now it's time for recognitions. So, we're excited this evening to recognize one of our own. Her name is Ms. Ashley Martin and she is our varsity soccer coach at Petersburg High School. So we're going to ask her to stand and come up. Come up to the front. And so Ms. Martin was named one of the most positive female coaches in Virginia by the 2025 Positive Athlete Program. Positive Athlete is a recognition program that celebrates high-character, high-school student athletes and coaches who have overcome difficult circumstances, given back to their schools and communities in a significant way, or just have an infectious positive attitude that makes everyone around them a better person. Out of more than 12,000 nominees nationwide, PCPS is immensely proud to have one of our own phenomenal employees recognized among the top 1%. "We commend you, Ms. Martin, for consistently exemplifying passion, dedication, and perseverance in addition to positively impacting the lives of each of our students every day. This award is a monumental testament to your character and we wish you the best of luck as you continue to inspire our students and lead the Petersburg High School varsity soccer team to victory. Remember, this award is not just a personal achievement," said Ms. Martin. "It is a reflection of the amazing student athletes that I've had the privilege to coach, the unwavering support from my school community, and the love and encouragement from my family. Coaching is more than just wins and losses. It is about building character, resilience, and confidence in our youth both on and off the field. On behalf of the Petersburg City Public Schools, congratulations, Ms. Martin, on this outstanding honor and well done."
I just wanted to say.
Hello. I think I could be laughing. It is on. It's good. So I just wanted to say thank you to Petersburg City Public Schools and especially my time here at Petersburg High School. It has been amazing to start the program here for the girls and the boys and to bring on a new history for us. So I'd like, I just want to keep continuing doing good work here and I look forward to a fantastic year this year. Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. So, okay, all right, thank you Board Chair Pritchett and School Board members. We have another recognition this evening. And so this young man needs no introduction to Petersburg City Public Schools or to the city of Petersburg. I am excited as a superintendent that I've gotten an opportunity to add to the senior cabinet, one of Petersburg's own, and that is none other than Dr. Tori Manson. Of course, Dr. Manson is going to come to the front and talk a little bit about himself, but I have to just say that it is, it's always hard to find just the right person for every position. And so I have the immense blessing to be able to work with a wonderful team and still had space to add additional support for our kids. And I am so happy that the team and I picked none other than Dr. Tori Manson to serve as, as Petersburg City Public Schools newest Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. Before he talks about himself, I want to remind everyone that that position changed. Previously in Petersburg, historically, that position was a compilation of operations. If you remember, just about a year ago, we had an Assistant Superintendent of Student Services that did a little bit of operations and a little bit of student services. And what I know, being a lifelong educator, and as many of you all know, whether you're an educator or not, student services needs its own space. Kids cannot grow and perform academically if all the right wraparounds and services are not in place for them. And so you cannot split your mind, you cannot be double-minded when you're talking about student services. And so this year, the board approved a new job description that focused only on putting everything that is student services, like counseling and, and, and Dr. Manson will talk about it, under one position. So it is a large department with lots of different pieces, but I know that Dr. Manson is the person to do this work. And so thank you, Dr. Manson, for heeding the call and coming on board the senior cabinet. And I'll let you reintroduce yourself to everyone and talk a little bit about your experience and what you will oversee for the future of Petersburg. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dr. Tori Manson. My educational journey actually started with Petersburg. I'm a graduate, proud graduate of Petersburg City Public Schools, started out at Robert E. Lee, went on to Blanford Elementary School, Peabody Middle School, and at that time with the first ninth grade class to come over to Petersburg High School. And so my journey started in Petersburg and I left out of education, but then I mean from there I went to college and all, but I came back in education 21 years ago. And I started my career at that time at Vernon Johns Middle School. It was sixth, seventh, and eighth, and I'm going to be honest with you, my first year at Vernon Johns, I was getting ready to get out of education. I was like, I don't know if I can do this. But I was convinced to stay into education. We got a new principal who came over and she was very inspiring. I tell anyone that Tonya Brown Fletch was like a leader to me. She was inspiring and helped me stay and focus in on education. And from there, Vernon Johns at that time was a middle school, then it became the junior high. During that, becoming junior high school, we were instrumental in that year, two years in 2008, getting that school with full accreditation. That was one proud moment that we had at Vernon Johns, at Vernon Johns Junior High School. Then at that time, after we did that back in 2011, I became the, I became the compliance specialist for special education for Petersburg City Public Schools. I was a compliance specialist. Then in 2016, I was tapped by Dr. Newsman and his team to become the supervisor of special education. And then in 2018, the director of special education. And so I spent many years in Petersburg City Public Schools. And my, and my number one focus is to give those students, to give all our students the same opportunity Petersburg gave me. I was a family of a single mother of seven, who, who didn't have much, but she just knew one thing, that education was the key for us and our family. And I want to give these students the same opportunity that this division gave me. I know we can do it. I believe in the team we have to get us there. We need your help as a partnership with the school board and we can be successful in Petersburg. As I stated in the, when we had our back-to-school event, my focus is to provide service. We are the student servicing team. We are to provide services to families, students, and to the schools to ensure that these students, when they leave Petersburg, they have the same opportunities that I had for enrollment, enlistment, entrepreneurship, and, uh, enlistment, enrollment, employment, the same I had. I had that for employment. But I chose to go to college at that time. But we need to make sure that we do the best for our students. We need to make sure that we ensure that our students are successful. No matter what we do, that is my focus. As I tell my team, we remove barriers, we don't create barriers. I have a hard time with excuses or looking back at what we didn't do. We move forward and we get the job done. Because as long as we are here to service students and families, then we're doing our job. And so I just want to thank you all again for taking the opportunity to choose me, Ms. Brown, and the executive leadership team as the new Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. And I would like to thank the board for your confidence in voting for me to lead this job. And I can promise you one thing, I'm going to give you 100% every day. Sometimes at night and sometimes one, two o'clock in the morning, but you're going to get everything from me that I can possibly give. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations to Ms. Martin and to Dr. Manson. Next we move board members to number three, approval of the consent agenda, Ms. Brown. 3A, B, and C.
All right, thank you Board Chair Pritchett and School Board members. We'll start with, so beginning, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the final personnel agenda dated August 20th, 2025, as provided. And then for the approval of the minutes, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the minutes of the 7/16/2025 special meeting, 8/6/2025 special meeting, 8/7/2025 student disciplinary hearings and reviews, and the 8/13/2025 student disciplinary hearing and hearings and reviews. For 3C, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board accepts the donations received by PCPS as provided. And if you'll direct your attention to the screen, these are the donations for the 2025 August 1st, 2025 to August 13th, 2025, division donations. And so thank you to all of our And so thank you to all of our donors who have donated their funding, donated items and support of our Petersburg City Public Schools. And so with that, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board accepts 3A, 3B, 3C as provided.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Are there any questions? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Moved by Mr. Pierce. Is there a second? Mrs. Tucker, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we move to four. We'll move to our superintendent and staff reports, 4A.
Thank you, Board Chair Pritchard. So we have our first presentation of this afternoon or this evening is our Boys and Girls Club of Metro Richmond to come forward, and so we have our gentleman here.
I think it's Ms. Green. Is she here?
Is she here yet? Come back.
I hope she didn't know. Yeah.
So we'll come back to that presentation. So we'll move to our second presentation of this afternoon or evening is our VS, Virginia State University, and the Cameron Foundation, and our PCPS engagement partnership and student attendance pilot, and we will have that given this evening by Dr. Yasmin Gay. And if we have Dr. Walter Willis in attendance, I think he's walking through the door as we speak. He has perfect timing, so we will have a representative from VSU, Dr. Willis. You have perfect timing. We saw as I was introducing the presentation, and of course, we moved you a little bit earlier than the first presentation, so thank you for being here to support the presentation this evening for the talk about the partnership between Virginia State University, the Cameron Foundation, and our PCPS Engagement Department for a two-year pilot around attendance. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Chief of Staff, Dr. Yasmin Gay.
Thank you, Superintendent Brown. Good evening, Petersburg community, Board Chair Pritchard, Vice Chair Pierce, and our esteemed board members. My name is Dr. Yasmin Gay, Chief of Staff, Petersburg City Public Schools, and I will talk to you today about our wonderful opportunity with Virginia State University and the Cameron Foundation to support our work around chronic absenteeism. So I will be presenting. Dr. Willis will be supporting, and if anything you want to add, please add. We've had a lot of conversations over the last few months about this great work, and we're really excited about it. Next slide. So just briefly, we will talk about what is our problem of practice, right? And we're centering around chronic absenteeism in Petersburg City Public Schools, and you've probably heard a lot from us. You've heard from our superintendent on our kickoff and some other spaces where our superintendent spoke around our focus on attendance. We'll talk about Virginia State University, Cameron Foundation, and Petersburg City Schools' partners, who will be partnering with us here on site. What is our two-year pilot and the theory of action? Like, how are we doing this? How are we addressing this work together to combat chronic absenteeism through family engagement? We'll briefly speak about our pilot objectives and timelines and what our proposed outcome will be, and then we will receive questions and answers. Thank you. Next slide. So our problem of practice, we always want to start with that. So what is the issue? So the Cameron Foundation services areas such as Petersburg, Hopewell, and surrounding counties, and you know the Cameron Foundation very well, who's been supporting a lot with our school system around challenges and making improvement around those challenges. And so just to give a little bit of data, this comes from Virginia State University, that chronic absenteeism remains a critical challenge. In 2022 to 2023, school year, nearly a third of all students were chronically absent, an 11.3% increase from 2018 to 2019, and we know what happened after that, right? It was COVID, and after that, students became more chronically absent. Of the 22,564 students in the district, it should have an S there after district, 6,386 missed critical learning opportunities. So that's our problem of practice here. Next slide, please. So who will be partnering with us? Again, this is a collaboration, Virginia State University, Cameron Foundation, well, led by our Dr. Walter Willis, Petersburg City Public Schools, again, and the Cameron Foundation. So I am really excited to welcome our two leads on the project. Dr. Karen Mapp is a prominent leader around family engagement, had an opportunity, she comes out of Harvard University, had an opportunity to work with her, not directly but indirectly, around family engagement strategy. She's world-renowned. She will support the design of the pilot and service our leading expert around this work. Again, just to talk about Dr. Mapp, is a professor of practice of education at Harvard Graduate School of Education. She's also the co-creator of the Dual Capacity Building Framework for Family-School Partnerships. School districts around the world uses this framework. Again, over two decades of experience, she works extensively with school districts, as I mentioned, community organizations, and policy, again, around the world. Dr. Shawde Harris, who works alongside Dr. Mapp, will be the one who will be focusing specifically on our work. She is a proven national leader in family engagement. She recently was the Chief Engagement Officer in Richmond Public Schools, and under her leadership, RPS achieved notable progress reducing absenteeism from 28% to a low 18%. That is pretty huge, a 10% decrease that was reported in May 2024 since the 2021 to 2022 school year. So just a little bit about those two experts that will be working with us. So I do want to emphasize that this is a partnership, and I want to emphasize, although we're bringing in partners, Petersburg is doing some amazing work in building strategy around attendance already, right? And so what we did was created what we call was Systems of Accountability and Support for Division-Wide Attendance Improvement. So with our work, not only with the executive team, but working with family engagement and others, and also feedback from our Attendance Task Force, what are the areas that we needed to strengthen here in Petersburg City Public Schools to actualize attendance improvement? And there are four pillars up there. There's one that's missing, and that's what the partnership will be supporting us with, and that is family engagement. But just briefly, looking at strengthening our data collection and analysis, I've been talking about that all year, about the data that we're receiving on a continuous basis. Our superintendent talks all the time about how clean and valid our data should be, the sharing of data amongst the division, from the division level down to the school level. So we will be strengthening that with our data assessment and accountability team leading that work. Also, principal oversight, principals' accountability and support for monitoring their attendance in schools and what that will look like. I do want to also recognize Dr. Manson, who was introduced as our new Assistant Superintendent of Student Services, will be rolling out what those attendance team protocols will look like with everyone having accountability to it, right? Our school-based attendance teams, what's happening in those teams every month, how we're looking at data, what conversations are we having, and making sure that they are consistent. Our division oversight of monitoring, we will be looking at data as a cabinet team as well, and also sharing data with our school board on a monthly basis. School recognition, making sure that we're recognizing schools that are making strides with attendance on a continuous basis. So again, those are four pillars, but again, this partnership is going to help us with the fifth. This will be changing because family engagement is a really big lever of change with attendance. Next slide, please. So our two-year pilot, what is our theory of action? We talked about our problem of practice. Now, what is our theory of action to make improvement there? So this is a two-year pilot at Pleasant Lane Elementary School. So this pilot will be at one school. It allows pilot partners to put high-impact strategies in action and test their effectiveness over time. So it's starting at one school, and the reason why we're doing that is we want to be able to test those strategies and to see what impact is being made so that at the end of the two years, we can scale them to more schools. Also, by applying these engagement strategies in real-world settings with the guidance of the pilot experts and district leadership, so again, it's our partnership, but we will be working very closely with family engagement, working with the Attendance Task Force team also to make this happen. Collecting data from school communities, critical data and feedback. So it's really important that we get data from our families and our communities about what they're experiencing in the community and their relationship to schools. The attendance dashboards, again, going back to data, is making data very visible to our school level and district level so that we can have a pulse on what's happening with attendance on a continuous basis. And lastly, again, at the end, we are collecting this data to create a model of effectiveness, again, that we can scale throughout the years and with other schools. Next slide, please. So again, I just spoke about our theory of action, our two-year pilot timeline and objectives here, so you can see what will happen in year one. Educators and school leaders are being provided a solid foundation of professional learning that will be guided by Dr. Shawde Harris and team, introducing participants, Pleasant Lane Elementary staff, to high-impact engagement practices that will build long relational trust with the school and community. Educators and school leaders at the pilot school are equipped with the foundational knowledge, and this will inform the beginning of their strategic attendance plans that will reduce chronic absenteeism and increase connectiveness between schools and families. Year two, educators and leaders will reflect on the engagement strategies, again, to enact a full-year use of critical data and feedback from families and communities. We will revise the strategic plan as we get more data and we understand what outcomes that we're getting, designing measurable goals, timelines, and strategies for improvement. And lastly, educators and school leaders at the pilot schools will build upon the year's learnings and implement what has been making impact over time. What is our proposed outcome? What should we expect to see from this partnership? So by the end of the pilot, what we should see is a reduction in chronic absenteeism at Pleasant Lane Elementary School, demonstrating the impact of authentic engagement on student attendance. Two, as I mentioned before, we will replicate, scale this model of high-impact engagement strategies scaled across schools in the Cameron Foundation service areas that we mentioned before to decrease chronic absenteeism. Three is, will be lifelong. It's increased sense of belonging and communication as perceived by our families. So family perception is going to be very important in our data and how we are combating attendance and chronic absenteeism. So that is the end of the presentation. I'm sure, Doctor, if you want to add anything. And excited to partner with you all.
So just in short, the partnership is really about us really embracing each other and making sure that the families understand the embrace that's going on. To really break this down, you know, absenteeism is a complicated issue, but we can't move forward without our families and without addressing some of those issues and/or concerns. And so it's all about data collection and using that data to make sure that we are embracing our families the right way. And we think we can do that better together. And the Cameron Foundation says that data and the national information that has already been collected show that these things work. Why not here in Petersburg? And the question really becomes, what is not just Petersburg school board's commitment, but the surrounding area's commitment, which includes Virginia State and Cameron Foundation? And so in short, we think that the solution is data, better data collection, immediate response once we have that data, and then embracing our families differently in order for everyone to feel that embrace in a way that makes a change in behavior. And so for us, it's doing more of the work that we've always wanted to do, but Cameron has given us a financial opportunity to use some of their resources in order for us to rev up some of the things that we've been doing on a shoestring budget in a way that will really make sure that the families feel the connection that we feel as a group. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from board members? I only have one. You speak of the dashboard, and I remember when Dr. Petrie Martin was here and we had COVID, it was during the COVID time. The principals, there was something that they developed, but every school, we could see their attendance daily. Parents could see it, and it was put on the website. Do you remember that, Ms. Tucker? Were you here?
Yes.
Yeah, it was a dashboard, and we could see that. Now, are you talking about the same thing, or are you talking about something different? Will we be able to see the daily attendance with parents and community, be able to see that if we were to go to the website? Or I think she just had a separate link.
So currently, we're working on right now our internal dashboard. We were just in conversation with our technology team and our data team that we will have an out-facing dashboard, but our internal dashboard through Power School, it was just created. And so thank you to Ms. Yates and team and the data team who were able to create an attendance dashboard for us to use and for you to be able to investigate as well. But the next step is, we were just talking about that in our last cabinet, we will be creating an out-facing dashboard for like division-wide attendance data. But we are ready with the dashboard, yes.
But we're starting with the internal one first.
Yes.
And then we will, as Dr. Yates, just want to make sure that, so that'll be phase one, and then the phase two will be the out-facing one, because I know we'll be coming to the board each month.
That's right.
Providing a, I think a board, I think it was requested, the board that we have a monthly update on attendance each month. And so we will have that first one in September. And so, Ms. Yates, I know you're standing up, so I don't know if you have like a timeline or anything at this moment. I know we're in the process, but maybe just give kind of where we are, kind of what do we anticipate when we'll start with the internal, and then how long do we anticipate? Once we kind of get that settled, then we'll be able to do an out-facing one.
So we are actually working on both of the dashboards simultaneously. So the internal one is actually ready where we can roll, you can see the data now internally, and we expect the external one after. one after we vet the data some more within 60 days afterwards.
Thank you, appreciate it. Ms. Tucker, Ms. Tucker?
So I had, I have two questions. So the first one is, I know that this is a pilot that's coming from Virginia State through the Cameron Foundation to us as a partnership. Is this something that has been done in any other schools in the tri-city, or is this a new pilot program?
So this is a new pilot program. This has not been done anywhere in this particular area. It has been done through MAP, Dr. MAP, and some of the work nationally. But not all of those communities and areas look like Petersburg. And so one of the reasons why it's a pilot is because there's going to be some tweaks that we're going to have to make to best address Petersburg and our population, as well as understanding our families in a different kind of way than some of those other families in the Connecticut area, for example. It might be a little bit different.
Perfect, thank you so much. You answered my second question. I just wanted to make sure that this was a pilot that was tailored to the need of our culture in Petersburg. So I appreciate that.
Any other questions from board members? Thank you, Dr. Gay.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Walter, appreciate it. Next, we'll move to 4C.
Thank you, Board Chair President and school board members. We'll move now to our next update presentation this afternoon. We will have our 4C, our Petersburg City Public Schools Healthcare Plan Presentation that will be given by the Pierce Group, who works very closely with our finance department so that we can make decisions about our healthcare coverage here in Petersburg. So with that, thank you very much. Please tell me your name again.
My name is Gray Hooker.
Okay, Gray Hooker, thank you so much.
With Pierce Group benefits, we have been the administrator for your benefit plans for, we're going into our third year, and we certainly are privileged to be here tonight. Thank you, Superintendent Brown and the board. What we're going to look at briefly here today, and the finance staff and HR have worked diligently for several months, as they do every year. We start this process during your budget sessions to get an idea of what needs to be budgeted for any increases in your healthcare spend for the year. We go all the way through the year, and your plan effective date is October 1st. So we completed our work in July, and what I decided to present here tonight, though, since this is our first opportunity to present to the board, is to go back to 2023 and give you a three-year perspective of how we got to where we are today. So if you would, the next slide. So the first slide here is the 2023 renewal. When we first came in during an RFP process and were hired to be your benefit administrators, we were asked to do an RFP for the healthcare plan, which had not been done in many years. You had been with Anthem for several years. That year, Anthem came in with an overall increase of 6.64%. When we shopped the healthcare plan and we spreadsheeted it, there was significant savings, if you recall, in switching from Anthem that year to what was then called Optima Health, which is now Centerra. They offered a one-month premium credit right off the top of $565,000 of savings. And in the 2023 renewal year, the overall savings was approximately $1.2 million less than what the Anthem renewal was going to be. So at that time, the board voted to move to Optima Health, and you've been there for the past two years. Next slide. The 2024 renewal year, we were asked to do the same thing, and the reason was is there was some sentiment among staff that they missed being with Anthem, to be quite honest. So we went through the same process, and the financial results were, again, far apart. Centerra came in with their first renewal with your group and gave just under a 2.5% decrease from the previous year, which saved the schools approximately $170,000 additional dollars. The reason they gave for being able to do this is in the 2023, 2024 plan year, you had a loss ratio of 70, just under 76%. The loss ratio is simply a measure from the premium that you pay in versus the claims that are paid out. And at anything around 75%, normally as a consultant, I would not expect you to receive an increase, and indeed, you did not. We also only had one member that year that reached the $150,000 pooling limit. Now, what a pooling limit is, is simply the $150,000 is the amount of claims dollars that Centerra themselves have to have the reserves to pay by law. They then purchase reinsurance to cover any claim over $150,000. The reason that exists in insurance is so that we don't have one bad claim of a million or $2 million completely wreck a health plan in any given year. We did, however, get a quote from Anthem in the process. They provided a quote that was still 11% over your current rates, so higher than the previous year. So again, the difference was approximately about $700,000 in the second year. So the board voted to stay with Centerra that year for your renewal. Then we flash forward to this year. This year did present some challenges. We did have increased claims activity that I'll explain in a second. And when we received Centerra's renewal offer for the third year, it was just under an 18% increase, which equates to approximately $1.2 million in additional premium they wanted from the schools than the previous year. The reasons they gave for this is your loss ratio jumped to almost 107% loss ratio. 75% the previous year jumped all the way to 107%. And you had eight members this past year that exceeded the $150,000 pooling limit up from one just the previous year. So they felt it necessary to pass on this type of increase. Once again, the staff that you have here worked diligently. They requested that we go back to Anthem and ask them for a quote. They did come in with a renewal offer at a 10% increase, equating to $676,000. And that number actually came in at about what was budgeted earlier in the year, as we at Pierce Group projected about a 10% increase, and that was what the placeholder was in your budget. So that by moving to Anthem, if that's the pleasure of the board, it will save $540,000 from the Centerra renewal, which is a significant decrease in the budget dollars that you'll have to spend, and it comes in line with what you budgeted in the beginning. Any questions on these slides before I go to the next one? Okay, got one?
If you could continue, we'll ask questions at the end.
Okay, yes, sir. So the next slide, once we get all that work done each year, we go to primarily the finance staff, but we also engage the human resource staff because they love to take a holistic approach. They know what is going on in the lives of your employees. And we take the increase and we ask the staff to go to the board and see what type of absorption of any increase that the budget can stand versus passing anything on to the employees. We were instructed to spreadsheet the school division, taking 100% of the increase, and the employee rates to not go up at all. So we did provide two spreadsheets, one for Anthem, one for Centerra. This one is the Anthem, and you'll see that the top is your current rates that you're paying right now and will be paying until September 30th. The bottom rates, you'll see none of those rates are changing for the employee, only the employer. So the total of $676,000 will be absorbed by the schools. And then the last slide that I prepared is a slide showing if you were to stay with Centerra, the impact with the same scenario of the rates for the employees staying the same for another year, but the schools having to come up with the difference. You'll see it reflected here that that's a change of $1.2 million in premium dollars. So we do believe that, you know, the diligence of your staff and our partnership, and this has really been a true partnership over the last some two and a half years, the results have been superior to some of your peers. We only work in public sector and primarily schools in North Carolina, Virginia, and South Carolina. A lot of your surrounding peers are also Pierce Group clients, and your results have been phenomenal over the last three renewal periods. Even with the increase this year, from where we were in 2023, you are still about $800,000 better off in your budget than you would have been if we hadn't gone through the painstaking work of changing carriers and then coming back to your former carrier. So we're very, very pleased with the work this year. That's my conclusion.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lundey?
Yes, we had a lot of hardships with our families, having their children during the times that we did some of these health, some of our health area, insurances and all. Do you think we will fall back into that again?
No, I do not. In terms of hardships, were they problems with the former carrier?
Well, it was with the former carrier, but it was basically with the family. It was very hard on the families.
To be perfectly honest, and I've done this for 33 years, family coverages are spiraling out of control in terms of cost. The vast majority of our 220 public sector clients face the same struggles, and budgets being as tight as they are, coming up with more contribution for family coverages is getting harder and harder. We've been able to stabilize yours over the three years where yours hasn't gone up, but we serve at the pleasure of the board and the staff, and we certainly, at any time, if there are additional budget dollars available to address that, we can do all of those calculations for you to address relief in the dependent coverage as well.
It was just the fact that families were really going overboard because of having their children. It meant so much to them, and we weren't having an even, we weren't having a balance. The most complex playground in the world is a seesaw. It can't be too heavy, and it can't be too light.
Right.
It must have some balance, and we weren't having any kind of balance. We were just getting whatever you all were trying to give to us, but it wasn't, there wasn't any type of balance. So I wouldn't want us to fall into that type of hardship again.
We certainly will work with the staff diligently to ensure that that doesn't happen, and we do meet on a quarterly basis to go over all of the data. So it really is a one-year process that we go through with the staff, and we certainly, I know Dr. Graywood will take that as a takeaway, and again, we can spreadsheet and come up with all kinds of scenarios to address that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hooker, for this presentation. Thank you so much for working with both my human resources, Dr. Lane and Dr. Graywood, I know y'all, and Mr. Wallingford has been a part of this conversation too, so it's been a team effort in trying to get to this point. My question is, when I first came to Petersburg last year, all I would hear is the insurance does not cover certain illnesses, it's certain, you know, pre-existing conditions, and you all correct me if I'm wrong, but that's all I heard when I first walked into the division. This, and I heard that before we had Anthem before, and it was great for all the things. What's the difference in this scenario around, you know, looking at an Anthem Blue Cross Blue Shield, again, bringing it back to Petersburg, and coverages? What can our, do you know what our team members and our employees will experience this year different than they experienced with Centerra?
It was Centerra, yes.
So what will they experience when they get to sign up for Blue Cross Blue Shield and we get ready to go back to Anthem? What about those coverages? What changes? Because I hear the money and the savings and all that, but what about what happens to the average employee? How will they feel that Anthem is different than Centerra since we've had Anthem before?
That's a great question, and we always, when we switch carriers, we do a series of disruption reports. And from the major medical benefit standpoint, that's deductibles, out-of-pockets, covering pre-existing conditions, as you mentioned, those mirror each other. Where most of the problems that we heard were in drug formularies. And, you know, where you go to, you can have one prescription being covered one way by one carrier and another way by another carrier. And we listened to that and engaged Centerra for two years on that. Quite frankly, those are harder to do because drug formularies can change from plan year to plan year with any carrier. So what your employees will experience, however, is we have asked Anthem to mirror exactly as closely as possible what you had three years ago before you left Anthem, because that's really, we didn't get a lot of detail on problems, but that seemed to be the overall theme. And Anthem still has the largest provider network, so it's going to be very difficult to find that your provider's not in the network. So I think they will be much more pleased to maybe get a provider back that may have not been in Centerra's network. When we did the disruption report last year, there weren't many, but there are many to the one person whose doctor is not in the network, if that makes sense. So we've really taken a holistic approach to making sure it goes back to the way they were experiencing what they said were good experiences.
Thank you. I have one more question. And so I just want to make sure that I'm clear so that everybody can hear that's listening and that's here, that one of the things I noticed coming to Petersburg last year and looking at the plans is that we pay a large portion. So the board has approved a large portion of healthcare costs. We are absorbing it. So people, I know everybody, nothing is perfect, so people have challenges, but I just want to make sure that I hear you say, and correct, so we can set the record straight, that given, you know, whatever we're trying to do as far as giving great coverage, but we're also absorbing a lot of the cost for healthcare coverage. Is that true?
That is absolutely true.
Okay.
You know, I personally am the lead consultant, as well as leading our consulting team at Pierce Group, so I see all of the plans that we administer. It is extremely rare to be able to get a full family coverage anymore for less than $1,000 out of pocket for an employee. Very few of your peers have anything below that, and you also give an option here where they can get dependent coverage at a much lower rate than most school divisions that we manage in Virginia.
So that's why I wanted to make sure that everybody hears, that this is a really competitive process and that we're eating the cost in our day-to-day budget for the healthcare for many of, for our employees so that they're not paying as much. And so even though some of the increases, I don't want to issue over time, we've continued to absorb those and not necessarily automatically pass them on to the employee. Is that right?
That's correct. You haven't passed on an increase in many years, and that's commendable.
Wow.
That you've been able to do that. I can tell you, in the past renewal season, you're an October 1 group, most of ours fall into July 1 category. I think we only had just a couple of divisions that were able to absorb the entire increase that they got this year. The budgets just wouldn't allow for it. So you as a board and you as a school division are sacrificing so that your employees are not over not only getting great coverage, the coverage they want, but at an affordable rate in comparison with your peers, and you're to be commended for that.
That is wonderful. I just want to make sure that everybody hears it, that's a focus for the school board approving to make sure we keep costs low. So I just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions from board members? Because this is my health insurers and employees. Are there any employees that have questions? Ms. Mason, if you would come to the podium, please.
Kimberly Mason. So the problem was with Centerra when we switched over. Centerra did not have a large network of the doctors.
That's what he said.
So when we had Anthem and the doctors that a lot of us had, so we could no longer go to those doctors. So then when you had to go out of the network, that's where the cost came in. So when you going out the network, then when they are subscribing medication along with that, so as a asthmatic, and if you paying, you know, $10 or $15 for a prescription, and now that becoming $150 to $200, so yes, that's where the problem is coming in, you know, to play. Where Anthem, where I could go to my specialist or pick whatever doctor that I could go to, I no longer had a choice. So I had to sacrifice, you know? That's what everybody was complaining about. It was poor quality.
Thank you, Ms. Mason.
And I'd like to piggyback Yvette Wilson, VA member and leader. I'd like to thank you all for flipping this, because there was a conversation about what would happen, and it did happen. So moving forward, I think I remind you that your employees are in some stressful, challenging situations here, you know? And so that, their bodies take on that. So if we have to dig in our pockets deep to provide those resources to maintain their health and welfare, then it's worth it, I would think, as your employees, because they are dedicated, they are very supportive of their students, and as Kim said, when you all went to a smaller pool, it costs them more, regardless of maybe the perks that they offered you on the front end. But it was the employee or the pediatrician who was not in the network, and you had employees who had children who were there, and if you're like me, once you get a doctor, you want to stick with them. They had those challenges and medication challenges. So thank you for making that sacrifice that you call for your employees, because I think they've earned those resources and opportunities. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Okay, Dr. Graywood, what is our next step?
So what is the next step? So we had the presentation to the board, so what is the next step so that we can move forward with, because we have selected Anthem again, and so we want to find out what do we need to do next and what does the board need to do? Is there something that we sign? What are the next steps from Pierce so that we can move forward?
As far as this is concerned, we've made the recommendation, and the board can approve that we switch over to Anthem today if the board so chooses.
Question, because it's not in here as an actual item. When is the start date? I don't believe we are late.
October 1st. It's October 1st.
Okay, so we'll bring it back at our first September meeting for action.
We can do that.
Okay.
And this is going to be a short period. It's going to end June 38th so that it would align with our budget, like he said. We're going to bring it back here for the next budget season starting July 1st, and it would align with our budget and then make it easier for us going forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
So September 3rd, we will bring the actual, we did the presentation tonight, we'll bring the actual recommendation for the board to vote in approval.
We could bring it September 3rd.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
We're going to have, we'll have you back up in just, are we doing the budget? We were doing the boys and girls first. So we'll have you back up in just a second, so we want to bring up Ms. Tamika Brown, who will come forward to give us a presentation on our Boys and Girls Club of Metro Richmond, so we are so excited to have you here this evening, so thank you so much. So we'll hear about our Boys and Girls Club, Clubs partnership, as we move forward for the 25, 26 school year.
Hello. All right, well, good evening. How y'all doing today? How is everybody doing out there? Just one, oh, 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 sorry. I'm going to grow. So I just want to do, as she said, I just want to give a brief overview of the Boys and Girls Club. We've had the pleasure of being in Petersburg for multiple years now, so just want to give you guys an overview of what we've been up to and all the exciting things that we've done with our youth recently. So I just wanted to start off by sharing our mission. Our mission is to fuel the balance potential in young people, ensuring that they are life and career ready. I feel like that is definitely, I like to say it a couple times so it can sink in, we make sure they are life and career ready. Some people who don't know about the Boys and Girls Club think that we are just an after-school wrecking parks, but we are not. We definitely cultivate these young people and want to ensure that they have a bright and shiny future and build skills for them. So, next slide, please. Here at Petersburg, we've been in the community, like I said, for over 20 years, longtime partner and provider, and we've been in several locations over the span of our journey. So we've been in Peabody, we've been in Blandford, we've been here on occasion, and we've also been, or we currently are in Vernon Johns Middle School, so.
Next slide.
At a glance, just looking at the numbers, we've served, in our fiscal year 2025, we served 81 kids. As you can see here, if you all can see the screen, it's a breakdown of our 6th through 8th graders and our 9th through 12th graders. If you cannot, we served 58 middle schoolers, and we served 23 high schoolers, which I think is pretty dope, just because looking at the retention that we do have, we definitely are trying to keep our high schoolers, even though we are housed at Vernon Johns Middle Schools, we still find a way to connect with those high schoolers, even though they're not physically in that space. Also, our program breakdown with those youth, we've had over 850 hours worth of programs in various buckets, but we've also partnered with over 20 program providers, so. Just to highlight a couple of the programs that we have had, our Torch Club, which is a civic engagement and leadership program, they definitely, it's a small group program for middle schoolers age 8, or age 11 to 13. What they typically do, they do civic engagement, social and team-building activities, and they definitely connect with other torch clubs. So we have seven clubs across our Metro Richmond area, so Petersburg is definitely an outstanding club, but what we also like to do is partner so that they know that they're not alone, and they actually can partner with other torch clubs in, within Metro Richmond area. And like I said, they do all kinds of civic engagement programs, and even last year, Petersburg's Torch Club was pretty, pretty active. They put together kits for the homeless, they put together wellness kits, they also, I think they had a teacher appreciation day where they put together little kits that they would pass out to the teachers and everything. So the Torch Club definitely takes pride in their little small group activities, and they definitely make an impact wherever they go. So we thoroughly enjoy the Torch Club. Another program to highlight is our Urban Farming. That program is definitely one of the programs that everyone signs up for that is in partnership with Virginia State University. We go off-site, sometimes they come to us, but most of the time we go to them, and as you can see, the kids enjoy interacting with actual live farm animals, they learn about agriculture, they learn about healthy lifestyles and eating right, and that program is definitely one of the ones that the youth enjoy, and Virginia State enjoys partnering with us. So we find all kinds of ways to provide variation, because it is a program that is selected. Each session, we break our programming down into sessions, fall, winter, and spring, and each session, we find a different way to scaffold that and to build on to what we provided the year, or the semester prior. So that's another program there. Cosmetology, cosmetology is also a fun one. Like I said, we are doing life and career readiness, so cosmetology is one of those programs where, the other ones, you're definitely learning, you're building leadership. This is the program where, all right, I'm building the skill set that I can potentially make money with. So with that being said, the cosmetology is one that the youth love because they learn how to barber, they learn how to braid hair, it's things that they're doing in general already, but they also have a layer of, a layer of the career asset, you know what I'm saying, to it, entrepreneurism, things of that nature. So what they're doing is they're actually getting skill sets that they can use with their peers, they can take home. We've had kids that actually, as part of their showcase, that's what we have at the end of the session, we have an actual event where you can demonstrate what you've learned. And what they end up doing is they do a demo, they do a demo of cuts, they may do a demo of the braiding, and then which that, you know, other kids see that, they get excited about it, and then that encourages kids to sign up for the next session of that. So cosmetology is definitely, definitely big. Like I said, we do hair braiding, skincare, and they also do barbering as well, so that's a pretty popular one with the kids. Next one. Creative arts. We do have our artiste, artiste that like to enjoy, enjoy, they do some solitary things where they may do some creative writing, they may do some journaling and things of that nature. Or you have, on the other end of that, performers, people who actually want to get in front of an audience and perform and do their skits and everything. So what we do with creative arts, we partner with Podium, RVA. We partner with Greenspring Academy, which is a music program, so they learn about various instruments, so it's almost an extension of what they would do if they were in band, or they would do, you know what I'm saying, something they would build on, on the school day, or something if they weren't even in band, they just get a chance to explore. Harp, those instruments that you may not have access to during the school day, we supplement that, and they love Greenspring Academy. Barton Heights Youth Organization is a partner that you see on here that provides spin academy, so DJing and creative mixes and things of that nature. So the kids definitely, from a range of, like I said, creative writing, just being a writer, being behind the mic, learning how to DJ, that creative arts thing is a chance for them to explore their creativity, is definitely a program that they also like. And I think, yeah, the next thing is, those are the things that we do inside the club. We occasionally go off-site for a program, but we also focus on not being in the space. Like I said, they're in the school during the day, and we have the privilege of offering our program during, in the school as well after school, but we also take advantage of is the ability to provide transportation and take them off-site. So we do a lot of programs too beyond the walls of the club. Anything from going to college campus visits, going to Richmond, going various places, just to give them a chance to like see what's beyond Petersburg and what's beyond their school day, and also getting them excited about just, just being with their friends, building community, and just knowing that, you know, the skills and things that you're seeing inside of the building, they're also outside, you know what I'm saying, outside in Petersburg. So that's another thing that we do as well. So with all the awesomeness, what are we looking forward to for fiscal year 2026? We're looking forward to continuing everything that we're doing, looking forward to building confidence, career exploration and building those SEL skills. We like to complement what you all are doing in the school during the day, continue our positive youth development. We also want to continue building and strengthening partnerships to expand exposure. It's really big, really big and really important that we expose kids to as much, as much as we can, only because if we want them to make decisions about what they want to do in life, they cannot do that if they have not experienced what they do like and what they don't like. So with that being said, exposure is super-duper important to us, and we just value you guys and are definitely looking forward to continuing our partnership with Petersburg School System and just Petersburg community as a whole. So I definitely appreciate it. Thank y'all for having us. Any questions, anything, comments?
Any question? Board members? Ms. Brown.
Yep.
Ms. Brown, Ms. Brown, Ms. Brown, this is Ms. Brown up here. Had an opportunity to visit, and I know Mr. Lundey, Mr. Danz, Pierce was here at the time, Ms. Proctor, I think, was here. Had a chance to visit the center in Richmond, and one of the things we talked about with the former superintendent, Ms. Brown, the one in Richmond has a recording studio, and we had talked about a possibility of seeing if we could put a recording studio over in the CTE wing that would give our kids an opportunity that are really into music. Richmond is exposing their Boys and Girls Club, they're exposing their kids to it. I mean, it's awesome. Those kids are in there making their music.
They are in there making beats and they're making music, and in the past, we definitely have partnered with, like I said, the Richmond Club by taking them down there, and with that creative writing, if you think about the Boys and Girls Club as an organic community, what we would have do, Petersburg kids do, is actually write lyrics to the beats that they were making at the teen center, the, you know, teen center he's talking about. It would be super awesome if we could actually do that here, and they wouldn't have to go down there and kind of do a hybrid situation, so.
Are you excited? You, I see you.
CFO is laughing because every time there's an idea, he knows I'm looking over at him.
It's money, it's money, it's money, it's money. Well, well, sir, the kids enjoy it, and they would get a lot out of it, and those future, the future, you know what I'm saying, musicians that you have, it would just do nothing but up our program, you know what I'm saying? So if you could find the coins, we would appreciate it thoroughly.
Mr. Lundey?
Any questions?
At one time in our south wing, we had all types of musical setups. We, kids did the weather reports, they did everything. We had a wonderful room in the south wing. It was, it had everything you could want in the south wing, everything, and they would do all of the morning announcements, any of the announcements, any things like that, and they did their music, and they came in and they brought, they had different people, like Mr. Aiken's father, he came in a lot of times. He was a good person. Mitch Malone, he came in, he was a very good person. So we had all of these things taking place, it's not like we haven't been accustomed to having them. Our kids are very drenched in what's happening.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I will say from experience with Petersburg, Petersburg is a, if you had to kind of, I know everybody is an individual, but if you had to kind of categorize them, they are artsy club. They are a club that definitely enjoys music, and they enjoy expressing themselves creatively. So any opportunity to enhance that or any opportunity to build upon what they're already doing would be amazing, so, yeah.
Any other comments, Ms. Brown?
So I know that, so the Richmond, it's great to hear, so I'm so glad that you'll be continuing working with Petersburg, and you all will be housed at Vernon Johns, is that right? So you can work with our students. So I guess just understanding how the program has, it seems like it's continued to grow each and every year. Do you have a goal this year for the number of students so can students, new students join the Boys and Girls Club? Like what does that recruitment process look like?
Absolutely. We definitely are always looking to grow, always looking to provide access to more and more kids that we can. I know our space in Vernon Johns, you know what I'm saying, we have to get creative at times. So what the recruitment does look like, we are, just a little plug, we are registering children as we speak. So registration is now open. Our programming will start September the 15th, so giving everybody a chance to get in. And our website have our, has our registration process and everything, but it's just as simple as clicking on the link, registering. Our program is free. Our program operates Monday through Thursday, and our program is from as soon as they get out of school to 6:30, Monday through Thursday, like I said. So registration, fairly simple, and like I said, we're taking more kids, yeah, you know?
Perfect. So I guess, so that would be great for us to get that information, because our communications department will blast it everywhere, so that we can make sure that we help with recruitment to be able to do that. So that sounds great, and so I'm assuming, I don't know, the, as we talk about the room where the kids are doing all the music and all of, I mean, what's it called again? The... The.
We had Spin Academy, I was about to say, we got Greenspring, yeah, Academy, we had a, got a lot of going on, yeah.
Absolutely, and so I want to find out, like, do you know, like, funding for that? Is that been through grants? Do you think, do you know how that was funded in Richmond?
I would say, correct me if I'm wrong, grants, uh, the majority, you know what I'm saying, of what we, what we're doing.
Gotcha, okay, gotcha, perfect, thank you. But if you could get that information to us, to our communications, um, chief communications officer, Chelsea Von Gare, we can give you that, her address and she can get it out.
Okay, I will couldn't make that connection, I appreciate you, thank you.
And I do have one more question. Ms. Glasgow and what's Forster Jones, a Jones Forster, the barbering teacher and the cosmetology teacher. Have you connected with them and do they know that you're offering the kids the barber, the braiding and cosmetology?
I feel like we, we may have, but it would be worth reconnecting just to make sure because I know we offer it, like I said, we offer it um sporadic. So we may offer it in the fall and we may offer it in the spring. Um, so it would be nice to actually, because and that other thing is to program providers, we also rotate our providers. So it would just be nice just to touch base, um, so we definitely can do that and put that on our, um, our action item to do this week or next week too. Um, it's just connecting them, so.
And you do know where they're located, right, over in the south wing?
I do not, but I can get that information from you.
Okay.
Alright.
Thank you.
You're welcome, no, thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Tucker.
I have just one question.
What?
Community partners.
Hmm.
Um, have you all reached out or do you have any Petersburg community partners? Because I know when we talk about like the studio, there's a community partner that we have, House of Market downtown.
Absolutely.
And they have a studio in their basement and I think, and I'm pretty sure, if you are, you all were to connect with them, they could maybe help you all come up with some grants for funding that space in, in the south wing.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, it is worth, like you said, it is worth connecting with them, um, just to see, but they do, they have a studio and it, it's a art, it's a art house.
It is, and I, um, House on Market, um, we've partnered with them in the past as well, um, and had a flourishing partnership. Um, kids have done their showcase there, so those events that we have, um, we've used, and if anybody's been our house, been in the House on Market, like that back area, um, we've had it set up, um, and have had bands and we had a drumming, um, you know what I'm saying? So we, we definitely have partnered with them before and would be looking forward to kind of, you know, reigniting or, or bringing something back. Because like you said, that, um, working with community partners and having somebody that is so, you know, in that lane, it definitely was a, was a pro, so.
Perfect, thank you so much.
No, you're welcome.
Any other questions? Appreciate it, we look forward to the partnership.
Alright, thank you for your time.
Sure.
Thank y'all.
And board members, we have the MOU for action tonight. We'll vote on that when we get to action. Ms. Brown, we'll move to four D.
Thank you, okay, thank you Board Chair Pritchett and School Board Members. We will now bring back up our CFO, Dr. Mathias Graywood, who will give us our monthly division budget um update related to our Head Start and our grants. Thank you, Dr. Graywood.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Um, good evening, Board Chair Pritchett, Vice Chair Pierce, esteemed board members and Petersburg City community. I am Mathias Graywood, Chief Financial Officer, and tonight I'll be presenting our monthly budget update as of July thirty first. Please note that our FY twenty five year end closeout is still on the way. Some figures may shift, final reconciliations are completed. Likewise, FY twenty six categorical allocations are still being finalized and future updates would reflect any changes to final breakouts. Slide two, please. We'll review budget to actual comparisons for the city transfers, food service funds, grants and Head Start programs. We'll also examine both federal and non-federal funding sources. Please keep in mind that some data is preliminary and subject to refinement. Next slide, please. Starting with the Petersburg City transfer, our original fiscal year twenty five budget was twelve point nine eight million. As of July thirty first, we've received one installment totaling one point zero eight million, leaving a remaining balance of eleven point nine million. Additional installments are expected and final figures will be confirmed once the FY closeout is complete. Next slide, please. General fund and expenses, FY twenty six and twenty five. For twenty five, the general fund was budgeted at sixty nine point two six million. With sixty four point nine million expended to date, the remaining balance of four point three seven million may adjust slightly as we finalize year end entries. For FY twenty six, the current budget stands at seventy point four nine million with five point three six million spent. Please note that categorical allocations for FY twenty six are still being finalized, so these breakouts may evolve in future reports. Instruction continues to be our largest expenditure, followed by operations and maintenance. We're monitoring overages in people, transportation and technology and will address them through internal controls and budget adjustments. The slide reflects the general fund breakout by state and defined categories. It aligns with our reporting requirements, but is also subject to change as FY twenty six allocations are finalized. We'll provide updated figures once these adjustments are complete. Next slide, please. Food service and grants. In FY twenty five, we budgeted thirty million across funds thirty, uh, oh two and oh seven. And with twenty million expended for FY twenty six, the budget is currently eighteen point five million with six hundred and eighty two thousand spent. These figures reflect early year activity and planned program transitions. As FY twenty six categorical allocations are finalized, we anticipate updates to these breakouts. Across all funds, FY twenty five total ninety nine point twenty eight million with eighty four point nine million expended. FY twenty six currently stands at eighty nine million with six million spent. These totals would be refined as we complete the FY twenty six closeout and finalize FY twenty six allocations. Next slide, please. Head start, federal funding. For head start, FY twenty six federal allocation is one point four million. Year-to-date expenses are thirty thousand, primarily in personnel. We expect increased activity in the next few months as classroom supplies and training programs ramp up. All categories are on track and compliant with federal guidelines. Next slide, please. Our non-federal share totals three hundred and fifty thousand with no expenditures recorded yet. This includes donated goods, volunteer services and transportation. These contributions will be documented and reported in current support throughout the year. Next slide. That concludes my presentation and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Graywood. Any questions for Dr. Graywood? Can you, can you go back a couple slides? I just have a question, I want to make sure that I understand. Go, right there. So when you say FY twenty five, are you talking about last school year? And when you say FY twenty six, you're talking about the school year that just started?
Yes, FY twenty six, I'm sorry, is the current school year. FY twenty five is last year.
Okay. So we had a budget last year of ninety nine million and this year we have a budget of eighty nine, that's what you're saying?
Yes, and that could change to depending on grants or anything that could come in later.
Okay.
Yes. But that's the approved budget.
Okay.
Yes.
That's it, I'm good.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Four E. Teacher vacancy.
Thank you Board Chair Pritchett and School Board Members. We will now have our next presentation of this evening, which is our update. Of course, we know our first day of school for our transitional grades was, of course, um, on um Tuesday of this year, Tuesday. And then, of course, today, yesterday was the first full day for all of our students in Petersburg City Public Schools. So we now have our HR teacher vacancy report, um, that Dr. Shabika Longley, our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, will come to bring forward as to where we sit with our teacher vacancies and provide an update on where we are with our university instructors. Dr. Lane?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Pritchett, Vice Chair Pierce, Superintendent Brown, board members, colleagues and community. Next slide, please. Tonight I'll provide an update on school-based vacancies and university instructors and provide an opportunity for questions. Next slide, please. As we begin, I want to make sure that we see this special note that these numbers that we have were as of last week, eight fifteen twenty twenty five, and these numbers are changing constantly as administrators are making adjustments in the best interest of our students. Next slide, please. We begin with looking at early childhood and our elementary core vacancies. At Cool Spring, we have two vacancies in kindergarten and one in first, second, third, fourth and fifth grade for a total of seven. At Lakemont and Pleasant Lane Elementary Schools, there are zero vacancies in our core classrooms and those are highlighted for you, they're in green. At Walnut Hill, we have one vacancy in kindergarten and first grade, two in second grade and one in third and fourth grade for a total of six vacancies. At Westview, we have a total of six vacancies in our Head Start or Virginia Preschool Program, also known as VPI. That brings us to a total of nineteen across our elementary schools and our early childhood program. Next slide, please. Next, we will be looking at our school-based vacancies at our early childhood and elementary schools. At Cool Spring, we have one special education vacancy, three encore vacancies, one instructional assistant and one school counselor for a total of six. At Lakemont, we have two special education vacancies, one encore and two instructional assistant vacancies for a total of five. At Pleasant Lane, we have one English as a second language vacancy, one instructional vacancy, two nurses for a total of four vacancies. And at Walnut Hill, we have one special education vacancy and two instructional assistant vacancies for a total of three. Lastly, at Westview, we have one instructional assistant vacancy. This brings us to a total of nineteen for our early childhood and our elementary schools. Next slide, please. The next few slides are graphs that are highlighting the percentages of core classroom, encore or elective classes, special education and English as a second language classrooms. So first up, we have Cool Spring, which has sixty seven point six percent of classrooms filled and thirty two point four percent of classrooms vacant. Next slide, please. Next, we have Lakemont, we have ninety point six percent of classrooms filled and nine point four percent of classrooms vacant. Next, at Pleasant Lane Elementary School, we have one hundred percent of our core classrooms filled and we just have that one vacancy in uh English as a second language as far as classrooms go. Next slide, please. At Walnut Hill, we have eighty one point six percent of our classrooms filled and eighteen four point, excuse me, eighteen point four percent of those vacant. At Westview Elementary, we have seventy five percent of classroom filled and twenty five percent of classrooms vacant. Next, we will review our middle school data. At Blanford Academy, we have one vacancy in math, history and English for a total of three vacancies. And at Vernon Johns Middle School, we have two math, one science, two English and two encore vacancies for a total of seven, bringing the total to ten across both campuses. Next slide, please. For our other school-based vacancies, we have one English as a second language vacancy at Vernon Johns Middle School and one instructional assistant vacancy for a total of two across both campuses. At Vernon Johns Middle School, we have, I'm sorry, at Blanford, we have a total of seventy point six percent of classrooms filled and twenty nine point four percent of classrooms vacant. And at Vernon Johns Middle School, we have seventy four point four percent of our classrooms filled and twenty five point six percent of our classrooms vacant.
And Dr. Lane, those pie check, those pie charts talk about core and non-core classes, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So not just the core classes, but if they have a music teacher vacancy, that's included in the number that's vacant?
Yes, ma'am, special education, uh, English as a second language and any encore like art, music, et cetera.
Gotcha.
Alright, so next we will look at our high school data. At Petersburg High School, we have two vacancies in math, one in science and one elective position for a total of four vacancies. And at Pittman Academy, we have one vacancy in math, science, history, English and our elective class for a total of five positions, bringing us to a total of nine at both sites. For our other school-based vacancies, we have uh two librarian positions at Petersburg High School uh that are vacant. Next slide, please. These next two graphs showcase our vacancies and percentages. So first, at Petersburg High School, we have ninety four point seven percent of our core elective, special education and English as a second language classrooms filled and five point three percent vacant. And at Pittman, we have seventy one point four percent of our classrooms vacant and twenty eight point six percent of classrooms filled. Next slide, please. Uh, as we take a holistic look of where we are, looking at all of our schools, again, in core classrooms, special education, English as a second language and encore slash elective classes, we are at approximately eighty four point four percent of our classrooms filled and fifteen point six percent of our classrooms vacant. Please note that these classrooms are filled with a combination of fully licensed, provisionally licensed and resident teachers. As we move through uh the rest of this year, we will continue to actively recruit for open positions uh to support our administrators as they fill vacancies at their respective schools. Before you, you see our university instructor data. We do have the support of this company, which is helping us to fill fifteen positions. And so far, we have ten of those fifteen positions filled with six of them going to elementary schools, seven, uh, two of the seven at our middle school and two for the special education positions, one being at Cool Spring and one going to Walnut Hill. So we're very excited for this partnership and uh we're glad to have those individuals who've decided to join us through university instructors. Uh, some are going through their onboarding process and some of them have already begun in their classroom. So we're again thankful for that partnership. At this time, that concludes my presentation for this week's vacancy update. I will answer any questions.
So Dr. Lane, just really quickly, I just want to clarify, if we go back two slides to the um summary. So those six elementary teachers have all been sent, those, all those six university instructors, they've already hired those teachers. They are housed at Lakemont, is that correct? So Lakemont Elementary School, which is a part of that number where Lakemont was fully staffed for their core classes, all of those teachers have been, um, are in place at Lakemont. And so only two of, but they're still university instructors, as I understand, are still actively recruiting for the middle school.
That's correct.
They've hired two so far.
That's correct.
And they've already hired the two for the special education teachers. They've hired the two that we decided to move back to, okay?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lane. Any questions from board members? Okay. Do you know, do you know, right off the top of your head, how many teachers do we have with VCU?
With VCU, that's Virginia, that's through our RTR program?
Right.
So we have four for this year.
So they only were able to get four?
We have uh one that decided to decline the program but was hired in another capacity here in the division. So right now we have four active for this year and then we had two remaining from the previous year.
Okay. And do we have, do Virginia State, where does Virginia State have a limit on the number they send us or?
I'm not sure there's a limit. We do have five that we have currently right now, um, four at Pleasant Lane and then one at the middle school, but I can ask if there's a limit.
Okay. Thank you. She said, yeah, the hero.
Hero at this time, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Five at Pleasant's Lane and then the one at the middle school.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms., Ms. Proctor?
Encore at our elementary schools are art, music, library, PE.
Which is, we said core, not, not core, what do we say, um, electives? We still use the old term elective.
So do we come up with encore or did we hide it encore?
Encore, I had encore slash electives.
Okay, thank you, okay. So from your previous slide, you called it encore, so it's electives, okay, gotcha, so we understand now. So electives, that's what it is. Thank you, okay. Gotcha, thank you. So it's electives, that's exactly right, thank you, Dr.
Electives, yeah. That's all you can take is two electives. Thank you, Dr. Longley. Oh, you had a question, I'm sorry.
Question, yeah.
Mr. Danz has a question.
Yes, um, Dr. Lane, I know we had some um opportunities to hire more Spanish teachers, how are we on foreign language teachers?
Uh, university instructors is helping us to recruit, so they're actively recruiting for those two Spanish teachers at Vernon Johns Middle School.
Great. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next we move to policies for F.
Okay, thank you Board Chair Pritchett and School Board Members. We will now move to our policies for first read this evening. So once they bring up the policies for first read. Little bit larger. Little bit more, little bit more. Thank you so much, alright. Okay, and so you'll probably scroll, maybe it's a little bit less, so you'll scroll over. Okay, so for our first policy of this evening, we have policy number one for our Petersburg City Public Schools policy, IGAG, and the title of this policy is Teaching About Drugs, Alcohol, and Tobacco. It is in alignment with our VSPA policy, IGAG, and the purpose of this policy review is the policy language and legal references have been updated, thank you. Perfect, thank you. So again, for our policy IGAG, the purpose of this policy review is that the policy language and legal references have been updated to reflect the addition of the Virginia Code twenty-two point one dash two zero six point zero one by House Bill seven thirty-two slash Senate Bill seven twenty-six twenty-two twenty-four. The cross-references have also been updated in alignment with our VSPA five twenty-five. Policy number two is policy for PCPS is IGAJ, optional. The title of this policy is Driver Education. That is in alignment with our VSPA policy IGAG, which is also optional, and the purpose of this policy review is the policy language and footnote has been updated to reflect amendments of the Virginia Code twenty-two point one dash two zero five, House Bill twenty-two one three, and then in alignment with VSPA five twenty-five. Policy number three, IGBA for Petersburg City Public Schools, and the title of this policy is Programs for Students with Disabilities. That is in alignment with our VSPA policy IGBA, and the purpose of this policy review is the policy language and the legal references have been updated to reflect the amendments of the Virginia Code twenty-two point one dash two seventeen point two by House Bill eighteen oh five, in additions to the Virginia Code twenty-two point one dash two fifteen point three by House Bill eighteen ninety-two, twenty, and Virginia Code twenty-two point one dash two one seven point four by House Bill twenty-two nineteen slash Senate Bill ten thirty-four, and Virginia Code twenty-two point one dash two seven four point seven by House Bill eighteen oh six. The cross-references have been updated in alignment with VSPA five twenty-five. Policy number four for Petersburg City Public Schools is policy IGBGA, and the title of this policy is Online Courses and Virtual School Programs. That is in alignment with our VSPA policy IGBGA, and the purpose of this policy review is that the policy language has been, remained unchanged, but our legal references have been updated to reflect the addition of the Virginia Code twenty-two point one dash twenty-three point six by House Bill twenty-six forty and Senate Bill thirteen eighty. A footnote has also been added in alignment with our VSPA five twenty-five. Our fifth policy of this evening is our PCPS policy IGBJ, and that is a new policy, and the new policy, the title is Advanced or Accelerated Mathematics, and that is in alignment with our VSPA policy IGBJ new. And the purpose of this policy review is this policy has been created to reflect the addition of the Virginia Code twenty-two point one dash two zero seven point nine by House Bill eight HB twenty-six eighty-six in alignment with VSPA policy five twenty-five. Board of J. Pitching and School Board Members, that completes our policies for first read this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any questions from board members? Okay. We will move on. Next, we move to our public comment period. I do not believe we have anyone who signed up. So we'll move next to our action item, six A.
Thank you, Board of J. Pitching and School Board Members, our first action item of this evening is our MOU with the Boys and Girls Club of Metro Richmond and the Petersburg City Public Schools, and we all heard the presentation this afternoon or this evening. So at this time, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the MOU with PCPS and the Boys and Girls Club of Metro Richmond as provided.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, you heard the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to accept? So move, Mr. Chair. Move by Mr. Dance, is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Tucker, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Six B.
Thank you, Board of J. Pitching and School Board Members, we now have our, um, board action requests for communities and schools of the tri-cities, our CSCIS program, and this is the MOU, and so if you remember, last board meeting, we had Jamal Ellison come to the front and provide us with a presentation on the communities and schools of the tri-cities, and so at this time, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the MOU for the communities and schools of the tri-cities and Petersburg City Public Schools as provided.
You heard the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to accept?
So move.
Move by Mrs. Tucker, is there a second? Second by Ms. Proctor, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Brown, before you move on, just want to say, um, I'm not sure if everyone knows, but Mr. Jamal Ellison is leaving CIS, and he is going next door, we're down the street, down Sycamore Street, and Jamal, just want to say that, well, Mr. Ellison, just want to say that, um, you've been a jewel to Petersburg City Public Schools. I know that the staff is going to miss you, but even though you told me that you'll still be around, but you will not be in that capacity, but you will be missed. I don't know who I'm gonna call now, and you know what, Ms. Wanda, you're gonna have to tell your husb, you're gonna have to tell your husband, I'm gonna be calling you a lot, it's nothing going on, but I'm gonna be calling you. We appreciate you. Okay, we'll move next to six C.
Thank you, Board of J. Pitching and School Board Members, congratulations to Mr. Ellison, we're gonna miss you, you have definitely been a, as Mr. Pitcher said, a jewel to Petersburg, and you've loved on our kids and poured into them to focus on all of the pillars of the communities and schools program, and just thank you, thank you, thank you, and we look forward to continued support in your new role as we continue to transform opportunities, learning, and success for every student in Petersburg City Public Schools, so that they graduate with life filled with choices, so thank you. And so now, we'll go to our, our next MOU with Virginia State University and Petersburg City Public Schools, and you all heard the presentation given by Dr. Yasmin Gay and Dr. Walter Willis. So at this point in time, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the MOU with Virginia State University and Petersburg City Public Schools as provided.
Thank you, is there a motion to accept the recommendation? Move by Ms. Proctor, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Six D.
Thank you, Board of J. Pitching and School Board Members, um, at this time, I want to bring forward to the podium, um, Dr. Tori Manson, before I bring the recommendation to the school board, this is regarding a memorandum with an up partnership agreement with Petersburg City Public Schools and the Infant and Toddler Connection of Greater Reach Community Services Board, and so before I bring the recommendation, I asked Dr. Manson to kind of explain it so that everyone understands before bringing the, the recommendation.
Good evening again, um, the infant and toddler, the MOA with the Greater Reach Community Service Board, is the infant and toddler?
If you all could click on it, it'll be great on the attachment, thank you. Sorry, Dr. Mason.
It's an agreement with the MOA, which is in line with the IDEA, the Individual Disability Educational Act, for those students from birth to the age of five, the infant and toddler, um, Greater Reach, they provide services to those students who parents believe or suspect that their child has a disability, and so under the IDEA, from what they call Part B to Parts, for Part C to Part B, they have to refer students to us that has been receiving services. Virginia says at the age of two, prior to their second birthday, then they have to, if they suspect that this child has a disability because they had a services plan, then they have to refer those students to us, um, they have to refer those students to Petersburg Public Schools and state that they believe that this child has a disability. So this is in guidance with, and in guidelines with the federal and state regulation for IDEA. So it is a provision, and what they do in Virginia is they have agencies, and so the greater, which used to be District Nineteen, they support seven school divisions in regards to this format right here, in regards to that Part C to Part B, it is a federal indicator under Indicator Seven and Indicator Twelve, which is our federal indicators, and so it's basically a partnership that we, we have with them, so that any parent or any child, that a parent, they suspect that there's a student with a disability from birth to age five, but for us, in Virginia, it's can be from birth to age two, they refer to Petersburg City Public Schools, and at that point, we have to take that child through the evaluation process to determine if the child meets special education-related services under IDEA.
Thank you, Dr. Manson, any questions, board members? And Greater Reach, Greater Reach Community is now District Nineteen, they've changed that name?
It's formerly District, it's formerly District Nineteen, yeah, they changed it, I'm still learning it, they just changed it about three months ago, we all know it as District Nineteen, but they changed it too, because I keep on saying Greater Richmond, but it's Greater Reach, so we're still going through it, but they just changed it about three months ago, um, because they want to say they're reaching for families, and they're reaching out to families, they're reaching out to students and all, so it's the Greater Reach Community Service Board.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Proctor?
Cut your, cut your mic on.
It's on. It is on. It's low. Her mic is low.
Can you hear me? There you go. Why the up to age two when the feds are age five?
Well, because the parent doesn't have to refer them, it's up to the parent, I mean, what the parent does is they refer this child to, um, Greater Reach, if they, if the child, they suspect that the child has a disability from birth to the age of, we're, under the Virginia law, it's age two, I mean, zero to two. At the age of two, Virginia law requires us, if the parent refer to Petersburg Public Schools, they require us to take the child through the eligibility process. The federal says age three, that before you have to take the child through, but it's up to the parent. So at the age of two, if the Greater Reach Community Service Board comes to us stating that they believe that this child has a disability and they've been providing service to them, we're required under the law to take the child through that services, but if the parent doesn't want the services from Petersburg and want them to continue to provide it, they can provide it from birth to the age of five. Once the child turns age of five, then they must refer the child to Petersburg Public Schools if they still suspect that the child has a disability. So they can, they can provide those services from birth to age five, but at age two, the partnership in the Virginia law is that if the parent so chooses, then they can refer them to Petersburg Public Schools, and at that time, we must take them through the child pro, child find process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Manson. Ms. Brown, your recommendation?
Thank you, Board of J. Pitching and School Board Members, so thank you, Dr. Manson, so with that information, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the MOA with Petersburg City Public Schools and Infant and Toddler Connection of Greater Reach Community Services Board as provided.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation?
So move.
Move by Ms. Proctor, is there a second? Mrs. Tucker, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Six E.
Thank you, thank you, Board of J. Pitching and School Board Members, we now have our, um, Petersburg City Public Schools big purchase approval request, and so if you all could click on it before I make the recommendation. Okay, so thank you, at this time, we're coming to the board to ask for purchase approval with SHI International Corporation. Petersburg City Public Schools is requesting the approval for the expenditure of one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars and three hundred and twenty, twenty-three, one hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars to purchase three hundred Lenovo one hundred C Generation Four Chromebooks for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. These devices are intended to enhance the student inventory at Petersburg, Petersburg High School, addressing the need for equitable access to technology within the school. The Chromebooks previously procured under the SIG grant or the SIG grant are designated for use outside of the high school, which has prompted this additional acquisition to ensure that all students at Petersburg High School have the necessary tools to support their academic growth and digital learning. The purchase, this purchase will be completed through the Sourcewell Technology Products and Solutions Contract, number one two one nine two three dash SHI, which adheres to the procurement standards and offers competitive pricing. We respectfully seek the school board's approval to move forward with this initiative to better support our students' educational needs. So again, the procurement type will be a Sourcewell Technology Products and Solutions Contract, and then we have, it's a one-time service, and the proposed end date would be nine thirty twenty twenty-five. And so again, the cost is a hundred and sixteen dollars and a hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars, and we're looking for this funding source to be state funding through our Virginia Public School Authority, and so at this point, we're asking that we, that we, the school board approve the SHI International Corporation not to exceed the hundred and sixteen, a hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. And so with that, are there any questions before I make the recommendation, or I have to make the recommendation first?
Any questions? There's two of them, you know it's two of them.
It was two, okay, sorry, okay. So for the second portion, thank you, for the second portion, at this point, we're asking the Petersburg City Public School Board to provide approval for the funding request of an additional hun, one hundred and eighteen thou, one hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars to purchase a hundred and fifty laptop devices designated for staff. This acquisition is necessary to replace the current staff laptops that have reached the end of their functional lifespan. So according to our records, the original laptops that were funded through the ESAR or COVID resources and are now due for replacement to be able to, for them to maintain both the instructional and operational efficiency across the division. So the proposed purchase will be made through Sourcewell Technology Products and Solutions Contract, um, one two one nine two three dash SHI, to ensure the adherence to the procurement regulations and to secure competitive pricing. We believe this investment is crucial to sustaining reliable technology infrastructure for our staff, and we respectfully ask the board for approval to move forward with the purchase of these new, um, laptops, Chromebooks or laptops for staff. And again, it's a one-time service, the proposed end date, that should be completed by nine thirty twenty twenty-five, and the contract spending authority is a hundred and eighteen thou, a hundred and eighteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars, and the funding source will be our local funding within our technology budget, is that correct? Um, Ms. Yates? Okay, your technology budget, okay, and the recommended vendor would be SHI Corporation, so we're asking not to exceed the hundred and eighteen thousand, six oh five. So are there any questions before I make the recommendation?
Yes, I, I just have a question. Any questions? I have a question on the first one. Um, Ms. Yates, the second paragraph, what did it mean by use of outside of Petersburg High School? Were they taking them out, or are you talking about taking them out this year?
No, the SIG grant only covers grades K through eight, and so, um, no, three through eight, and so we are, um, it does not cover Petersburg High School nine through twelve, so we have to find a different funding source to purchase devices for Petersburg High.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Go ahead, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Yates, thank you, Board of J. Pitch, so at this time, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve both of the purchase approval requests for SHI International Incorporated as provided.
You've heard the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion to accept?
So move.
Move by Ms. Proctor, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we move to F, six F.
Thank you, Board of J. Pitching and School Board Members, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the job descriptions for the dean of student, not at Pittman, Pittman Academy, but the dean of student, dean of students at Petersburg High School, and the, the graduation coach at Petersburg High School, and the school testing coordinator, and, and the disciplinary hearing officer as provided, so those are the new job descriptions, um, provided this evening, and so it again is the superintendent's recommendation, the school board approve the descriptions of the dean of student at Petersburg High School, the graduation coach at Petersburg High School, and the school testing coordinator at Petersburg High School, and the disciplinary hearing officer as provided.
Any questions? Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation? So move. Move by Mr. Dance, is there a second? Mrs. Tucker, was that you? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move to G.
Thank you, Board of J. Pitching and School Board Members, we have our vendor contract this evening, and so, just so, I don't know, it's not showing up on the screen, but we have, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the vendor contract between Petersburg City Public Schools and Mr. Titrell White, who came in and did additional support prior to his first start date on July the first, so we are asking for approval, um, to move forward with his, um, hourly contract where he was able to provide services prior to coming onboard, and so between Petersburg City Public Schools and Mr. Titrell White, it is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve that vendor contract, and the vendor is Coach White.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, and, and he's already been paid, right? He's been paid? Oh, it's good, once we approve it, okay, and also, want to make sure also, before we, if we make this public, if we could please remove his personal home address and phone number. We can, once we approve it, it becomes public. Yeah. Yeah, so you can just, I mean, we can, um, redact, if you can redact his home address and his phone number, but you can leave his name on there. Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation?
So move.
Move by Mr. Lundey, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Proctor, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we'll move to six H.
Thank you, Board J. Pitcher and School Board Members. It is the superintendent's recommendation that the school board approve the policies for second read as provided.
Thank you.
Those are the policies on the screen that we talked about at the last board meeting. So these are policies for second read.
Thank you. Is there a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation?
So move.
Move by Ms. Proctor. Is there a second? Mrs. Tucker, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next, we'll come to our information items, seven A, Ms. Brown.
Thank you. Okay, here is, okay. Go back to the first. Thank you. We have a very brief superintendent's report this evening, so first slide. Thank you. Next slide. Thank you. And so I just want to celebrate our very first day of school here at Petersburg City Public Schools. We're so excited that Tuesday, August nineteenth, which was yesterday, was the very first day of school in Petersburg. And so we were thrilled to welcome our students back with cheers, signs, and high fives across our schools. I want to say thank you to all of our volunteers, as you can see some familiar faces in the crowds there, that our volunteers, our community members, our leaders of organizations came out to really, really welcome our students back to school. So thank you for being champions for impact, as you see with our V S B A and our partnership. And so thank you to everyone for making it a great opening of school. And so I just appreciate it. I just wanted to highlight and say thank you to our community for taking on the charge of welcoming kids back to school. Well done. As you can see, some of our, many of our board members, Mr. Pitcher, Mr. Dance, we also see Ms. Proctor, Mr. Lundey right there. Anybody else I'm missing? I'm seeing close up, and then all of our wonderful, like I said, N double A C P volunteers, just everyone. So this is what community is about. This is what community is about, supporting our students. So thank you to everyone. I just wanted to highlight you this evening. Next slide, please. Thank you. So I just wanted to show everyone just a quick video, really quickly, that talks about our Petersburg City Public Schools recruitment. The P C P S Human Resources Department has partnered with W R I C and A B C Eight to advertise. So we did something different. So unfortunately, we started with phase one, which is at the airport. This is phase two, all right? So this is our next part of our toolkit that we are advertising on television. So this week on Tuesday and Thursday, A B C Eight is doing a homepage takeover banner that will float across where everyone who logs on will now see Petersburg City Public Schools advertising as front and center on their website. Additionally, just to unveil tonight, we also have done a P C P S commercial around coming to Petersburg. And so we wanted to show you, that is a commercial for recruitment that is showcased on A B C Eight programming. So that is part of our phase two work to recruit. And so I wanted to show you that this evening.
Come transform with Petersburg City Public Schools. Job vacancies range from classroom positions to operations and administration. And while funds last, we're offering a sign-on bonus up to seventy-five hundred dollars for eligible teachers. Apply online today.
All right. Thank you. All right, so we started at the airport, now we're going to the next thing. So we're gonna get it out to the masses. So thank you to Dr. Long Lane and Chelsea Van Guer, our chief communications officer, for working on our strategy that we're taking a step at a time to try to, to get the word out about our vacancies and inviting people to come to work and transform with us. So thank you. And so we don't need the memorandum of agreement. We had a presentation, so thank you very much. I think that's the last slide. Is that right? All right, and thank you. That concludes my Board J. Pitcher and School Members, that concludes my superintendent's report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Before we move on, could you give us an update on the movie? I think you all are back in the building and everything.
Oh, absolutely. So we are, my goodness, thank you to Mr. Garrett and team and the maintenance team. So school board office has moved out, we've moved from our locations and we moved back into the school board office, but we are still unpacking boxes. And of course, if you all remember, we had everything packed up and moved to be stored over the summer. And so you'll see moving trucks, so we are still in the process of unpacking. We are not there, but people are working in their cubicles. We're still getting technology up and running. We're still getting, like I said, everything arranged, so if you all just bear with us, but we are there. We're still getting phones hooked up, is that right? In, in some spaces, but we are the person, I think we're now gonna have a new H R number so that we can monitor calls and make sure that we are being responsive. And so that is something that Dr. Lane is working on next, to be able to do that. And so we are back into the school board office at this moment, but we are still moving. I don't have, so Mr. Martinez is out, but what I know that we have, we're still finalizing also the restrooms here at Petersburg High School. Our contractors are wrapping up, starting to wrap up a lot of the work here. And so we're excited to be able to give you an update soon about everything that we're closing down, because remember, we're supposed to be done by September of twenty twenty-five. So if you need us at the school board office, we are there, but just know that we're consistently moving, and we're gonna make sure that we try to do everything we can to reach back out, make sure that we're being responsive. So that's where we are at this moment.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any questions? Okay, next, we'll move to committee reports, and I do believe that we are starting our committees this week, yeah, with this month, this month or either next month for September.
We have our first advisory, our operations advisory will be coming up next week. And so we are working to make sure that we have all those pieces in place, and so that'll be one of our first advisory meetings, because we have lots of, lots of operations work that is going on right now in Petersburg. So that will be our first meeting next week.
Okay. And Ms. Jay? I don't know ours. I mean, I don't know the gifted yet. I don't have a schedule.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The Apple Max Regional Government School Board, we met last Thursday, and we had a very good meeting. We got up to, off to a good start this year at the government school. Two main things we talked about, we have conducted a salary study, and we have found that our teachers are a little below the average that are paid in this area. So we, we're talking about increasing for the next two or three years so we can get our teachers up to speed with the other localities, because we have some that are talking about maybe leaving us, and we don't want them to leave us. Also, we are doing quite a bit of capital improvements at the government school. We're putting a new roof on the main building. And we're also going to redo the roof on the alumni house and paint the alumni house. And we're going to scrape and caulk the windows throughout the main building. So we've got roughly about two million dollars worth of projects that we're going to start on soon.
Excellent, excellent. Well, tomorrow, we have an executive, executive board meeting tomorrow at Maggie Walker, so I will be there tomorrow. We do not have the full board meeting. That'll be next month. And I believe, my understanding, Code R V A has a meeting tomorrow?
Superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Code R V A has a meeting tomorrow also. I think it's at eleven o'clock.
Superintendent.
And PAC will be starting up the first Monday in September, yes.
Okay, okay.
Do they have a virtual link for R V A, I mean, for Code R V A?
Oh, no, well, they should be sending, they should be sending you the schedule. All of the committees should be sending her a schedule so she can, she can post them. Yes, because the meetings have to be posted.
And you've already gotten the information for the, for the operations, right? You've been working with them? Mr.?
I have a hard date.
Okay, gotcha. It's next week. Okay.
Okay.
This has been three days before, so.
Right. Okay, thank you. Okay, next, new business from board members, and I believe we talked about new business also. But our next board meeting will be September the third. I believe there's some training coming up, if you have not already responded, with V S B A on Wednesday, September the twentieth. That is another school board meeting. Where is the V S B A? Okay, workshop evaluation. If you're interested in attending the V S B A Fall Superintendent Workshop Evaluation, please see Ms. Davis. It is September the twentieth. Also, the basic budget, budgeting for student needs is October the twenty-first. What's wrong? What happened? September nineteenth? You have September twentieth, is that incorrect? You have September the twentieth? It's not the twentieth. It's the nineteenth. It's the nineteenth, I'm sorry. The V S B A Fall Superintendent Evaluation Workshop is September the nineteenth. Please see Ms. Davis. And our annual conference or convention is November the ninth through the twenty-first. And the registration is open, I believe. It's open, right? It is open. Okay. Okay, that is it. The time now is seven oh seven P M. Is there a motion to adjourn? Move by Mr. Lundey. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dance, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Meeting is now adjourned. Everyone have a wonderful evening.